I mean, to me, it's a good thing though.
Yeah, well, it is. But will they, one thing, are they gonna send up a police car up here to get the prisoner? Or do we have to send our cops down?
No, our guys, it's gonna be way more efficient to send our guys down. That's part of the policy. They're available? I know from working there.
You could put them in that room, the thing's still on the wall, thank you for that. Yeah, that'd do that with some guys in there.
Okay, let's stand for a minute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Drake.
Present.
Board member Neesel. Board member Steen.
Here.
Board member Van Blarke.
Here.
Supervisor De Scalfani.
Here.
I'll read the announcement. The town board of the town of Shandaken will hold a special meeting to take care of town business and followed by another workshop to discuss the proposed short-term rental law on Tuesday, February twenty-second, six P M., seven two oh nine, Route twenty-eight. The workshop is open to the public, but not open to public comment.
This was just a workshop, actually.
Okay, well, we do have to do that one thing. A motion.
Right.
So, that's part of the special meeting part.
Right.
Okay.
Just to put the public hearing out. And so Chad, just, you can just tell us, give us an update on what that is and you can s-
Okay, so Pete asking a comment just to address the board regarding centralized arrangements. And basically what that means is instead of each individual municipality, the way the current system is, each individual municipality has their own justices.
People should be the community in life.
They can carry out the question next week.
I'll stop.
So, basically what that means is they, each municipality has their own judge and they, you know, they're periodically calling their judges out, you know, in need of more, you know. What centralized arrangement is essentially that you want central point, which would more than likely be in the Kingston area. You know, there's been talk of the law enforcement center being in that place. And Peter asked me what my thoughts were, and my thoughts are, I'm in favor of it. I think it's just a more efficient way to, to give people a rain in the middle of the night. Our judges are great here, they're available most of the time, you know, but there's vacations and this and that. So, you know, there's been times at the early morning hours where we're looking for a judge and, you know, we're calling the municipalities next door to us. And then, once you get out of the misdemeanor level of crimes, you really can't go to a town beyond the ones that join us. And it's just, I think this is just an efficient way to be part of the justice system. I have been able to, I have been part of some of the legislative meetings in the committee that the counties have. And I've given input, you know, we are one of the furthest towns out, obviously. And like I said to Pete on the phone, I, I do agree with it, I just think it's an efficient, it's moving towards an efficient way for the justice system.
With our, I, I would agree with our judges getting older and finding it more difficult to getting out of the house late at night, because this is just an after-hours thing, right? This is-
It's an after-hours thing, our, I mean, our judges are great and, you know, there's other towns that call our judges to come out and do arraignments, you know, just like, they get stuff as well. So, I, I, it's, it's an after-hours thing. And it's really, it's one of those things, you know, with bail reform, we're really not arraigning a lot of people unless there's a qualified offense. Qualified offense, we're looking for order protection, there's another type of judicial intervention. So, we're not talking a lot of time where our officers are actually going out of town and going to do the stuff as a person, so however many judge, it's one phone call, it's one trip, it's good we got to do that stuff.
Thanks.
But you got any questions?
When does that start or do you know?
You know, this is all in the early preliminary stages, you know, the magistrates are, they have their own issues with it as well. I think there's like forty judges within Ulster County. So, the way it would work is each judge would have a week on as being the on-call judge. So, there, you know, there's still ongoing talks as far as, from my knowledge of what's actually going on with centralized arrangements.
And Chad, let me know, this is actually gonna be voted on before the legislature, so it'll be our county legislature.
There's gotta, right, there's gotta be some law changes and there's gotta be some-
Does the town lose any money if it's arraigned somewhere else?
No.
That's all I care about. Unless we're not losing money, I'd be up.
The reality is, it's no different now, if one of our judges is not available, we call another municipality for the arraignment or whatever. You know, the court case is still gonna come back to the town of Shandaken and it's still gonna get disputed.
It's just available.
Unless, of course, it's a felony level, then it goes to grand jury, it goes to county court. All the misdemeanor level, the traffic offenses, all that will still come back to the town and be, you know, obviously prosecuted within our local judges. Strictly for arraignment purposes.
Thanks, Chad.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joyce.
So, we'll get to the workshop. Before we get on to the fee schedule and the brochure slash flyer, whatever we're gonna call it, let's talk, a couple of things I have for you guys, questions about the law. We took out the part about multi-units being okay, or not being okay, from last week. The multi-units that we do take, properties that have multiple units on them, I would like to put a cap on that. Like, I mean, we're gonna have the primary residence and an accessory. Do you think that there would be any more than two?
There are. Currently existing in Shandaken, we have S T Rs operating on lots that have more than two units on them. Several.
Right.
Yeah.
But now, the purpose of the law, it's to help out homeowners to do some short-term rentals, to make some ends meet, to help them, yeah, pay the taxes and pay some bills. Not necessarily, I mean, some people, it's their livelihood, it's their business.
Right, right.
But I would like to put, you know, figure out a cap. I mean, I don't want somebody to just buy another piece of property, buy another, next door, next door, next door, and add more to that one permit.
Well, that's-
I mean, that specific instance is already taken care of by limiting to one license.
Well, you got one license, okay? So, then, you, you buy the property next to yours and you add it on to that license?
I mean, only if the planning or Z B A were allowed.
I, um-
I, I think that's a, I'm sure it's possible, but I think if somebody were buying property to adjacent and then they wanted to combine their properties.
Yeah.
Because the license would only be applicable to the first property.
The first property.
Right, so if they went to whoever to get a lot line adjustment.
Okay.
The, you know, the board would have to say, well, do you operate a children rental? Is this why you're doing that? Sorry, but no.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that-
But what if somebody owns a big piece of property and they wanna start putting on-
Like building more structures?
Yeah.
That's what I thought you were asking originally. So, we're touching on two things now.
Plus buying another piece of property adjacent to it and then joining the two properties.
That instance also already exists where two lots have been combined into one and have a grand total of three S T Rs on it. I know of at least one of those cases in this town. I know of several properties that own many.
Can we say, we'll, we'll cap it at three units or three?
I mean, I'm fine with that conversation, for sure, but I don't know, we'd have to find out, we'd have to do some numbers.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get into that.
And find out what's pre-existing in the town right now.
Yeah.
For sure.
The only, the only town I'm interested in is that's out of town.
Because he wanted to allow everything that's pre-existing.
Yeah, I think especially if they're a local, you know, if they're a full-time resident, you don't wanna start over policing certain aspects of the law.
No, no, that's right.
And I, I agree that, you know, the original idea coming out of the committee was to cap non-owner occupied short-term rentals.
Right.
Mostly, so, I, I think, I don't know.
That, no, that's, that's, yeah.
In that email that I sent when I spoke with the attorney.
I, I believe he's mistaken. I know he's the one with the law degree, but several towns have, Milan, for example, I believe in 2019, enacted a law completely forbidding non-residents from operating S T Rs.
Yeah.
Catskill has a similar, several other towns nationwide have laws restricting much smaller percentages to non-residents than to residents. So, I, I would need to know exactly what he means when he says, we might get into trouble. That's not good enough reason for me not to do it, because I would, I would rather take the risk of getting into trouble and protect residents.
Yeah, sure, 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 sure.
Unless he can give us, here's the exact case, this town is sued, this lot is-
Well, he just threw out, I don't think he had an exact case, he was just thinking that if perhaps non-residents massed together, joined together and said, hey, why is the, why am I being regulated differently than residents?
Because you're not a resident.
Yeah, and I think that's why we, we kinda moved away from the non-resident resident verbiage to non-owner occupied, because it's easy for somebody to say like, oh, I'm just gonna switch my residence. But you need to know if they're gonna be on the prem, you know, if they're on premise or not, because that's when you get the property manager involved. At the committee meetings, it was interesting to see how many property managers came out.
Yeah.
Just to say their piece because they're managing several, several of these properties.
Right.
So, yeah, I think maybe like, you know, just speaking of verbiage, moving away from that non-resident resident, because that creates a battle in and of itself.
I don't know, we don't even have that in there.
Our, the S T R committee's report said-
We just have owner and property manager.
Yeah, no, I, I just mean in the discussion.
Yeah, this, and this may be, you're right, this may be where this came from, why we arrived at it. We had, I'll just read, any legal resident of Shandaken who is a resident host, i.e. rents lodging on his or her full-time legal residence, may apply for a Shandaken S T R license. S T R operation licenses in Shandaken granted to non-Shandaken residents or Shandaken residents who are not resident hosts of the licensed property shall be limited to a number of ten percent of the currently existing number of dwelling units. So, we actually, and this is something we've run around with a lot, came up, there would be no cap for resident hosts. Your property, you live there full-time, you've got an S T R on it, there was no cap on that. We were only looking on the committee at the cap at non-resident hosts.
Okay.
And that, that would cover, obviously, if you don't live here, you can't be a resident host. But also, what you just pointed out, buying up all sorts of properties, you can only be a resident host of one of them.
Right.
But we weren't gonna say that it wasn't a per-person limit, it's what the cap of the total number was.
Okay.
Because we started looking into, I don't remember if Mark took it all the way and asked the town lawyer, tracking ownership, and we're gonna ask for the actual owners to list anybody in any corporation. We have no way of checking that. There actually, we were told that there would be no way for us, or it would be very difficult, costly to find out, if somebody says, you know, Corporation Rent-A-Home LLC is owned by Fred, and we would never know that it's also owned by Mary, John, and Bart, and there's another company, we're told. It just became a tracking nightmare, so that's, and maybe that's too big a number. If we have no cap on residents and that leaves, again, we don't know the exact number of dwelling units.
Well, Grace said it was about sixteen hundred dwelling units, so that we're talking a hundred and sixteen.
Hundred and sixty, so maybe that's not so bad. Maybe that's not such a high number then.
And as it pertains to people, you know, lot line adjustments and people building, we have institutions in town already to take care of that kind of stuff.
Of course, of course.
So, I don't know that we need to start dabbling and stepping on toes as it pertains to planning board and Z B A and, you know.
No, of course, yeah, but I just thought we should-
Keep it-
I think we should continue to discuss that and how we're gonna address.
Yeah.
Because, no, we don't want someone just buying up an entire block in any one of our hamlets or towns and making it S T R row.
Absolutely.
We don't want that.
I, I mean, I know that if you have a bunch of houses on one property, you have to have different permits and, you know.
That's, yeah, that's, we already have zoning in place for that kind of situation.
Exactly. I don't want those places also to be-
We were discussing, I went to naming it, but we were discussing a couple of individual properties that fit that category just the other day.
Right, right.
Yeah, we have, we have a number where it's three, four, five dwelling units on a single property that are operating as S T Rs.
Well, some are like, you know, there's two or three in the main house and then maybe one or two cottages or that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, but you don't even wanna address kind of a, just throwing it out there.
What do you two think?
Like, I, I think we need the numbers to have a stronger conversation, like Kevin said, like, you know.
Well, if somebody has-
If it's, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna start penalizing residents, you know.
Nobody would be penalized, I mean, there's no taking it off, of course.
Like, if somebody has, like, if we set the cap at three and somebody already has four for a, you know, a resident that is-
It wouldn't mean that the place would be empty, it'd mean they could rent it long-term. It's not like, nothing, but-
Right. Um, yeah, I, I would like to see how many instances that happens, you know.
Say there's a dozen.
That's, you know, that's, that's a dozen people were telling that they can't, you know, rent-
Fully utilize their-
Their property.
Their commercial potential.
We can always get into a conversation of grandfathering in, there's a lot of that in this town. As far as, see what's-
Well, we can, we can say, you know, well, we can also put it, instead of putting it in as grandfathering in, we can just say, you know, to whatever you have now.
Sure.
In this first year, no more after that. Multiple unit dwelling or properties.
I mean, it'd be nice to know how many are currently existing, but I, I do agree that there's existing-
Well, we'll know after we do this, but it's hard to, it's hard to know for certain, because often-
It always will, yeah.
Often, even in the Airbnb, it doesn't list that it has two or three units.
Oh, of course.
They'll rent the whole compound in one.
Right, 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 no, but I, I do think we have some existing protections in place for, for new-
Of course, of course.
New examples of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, if there's already five units on a property, there's five units. But if an existing property only has one, for them to go to five would involve some additional work that already exists, so. Right. Maybe that-
Adding one more would just take going to the building department and getting a permit and then maybe seeing the planning board to get a special permit for an accessory apartment. You can't just add one more just because it's in this law. You're all good with that? Okay.
Yeah, and I think in that instance, it's like Sarah's gonna be the one dealing with these permits, and I think she'll probably work it into the routine.
Right.
Of, you know, I don't know that you can necessarily ask somebody what they're gonna do, but, you know, maybe you say, is this for a short-term rental? I don't know if that's okay, I don't know if it's legal, but I'm sure there's ways to find out, you know, is this gonna be for a commercial purpose or what have you?
Right, I mean, well, we put it in our law that they have the answer to that question.
Yeah, and if, and if that's the answer, then maybe they just have to go to the planning board, whatever.
Right, right.
I was gonna say, on the, on the, wanted to see the numbers, I, I've seen lists from the county, from various sites.
And that list from the county seems to me, I mean, I was looking at it over and it's missing-
It's missing a lot.
It's missing a lot, and it has, it has a lot of outdated information.
It does, so.
I know places that have sold and the owners don't even live here.
So, I don't, I don't, other than, like, and there are people who know better than I, you know, who lives in every house in this town, but short of driving around door-to-door, getting shot at on some properties, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get that number we'd all like to have of exactly what it is.
Well, we, we should have it by the end of the year for people-
The ones that are compliant anyway.
The ones who comply, who apply for licenses, people have a list of the ones who apply.
Of course.
Still won't have a list of the ones that didn't unless, well, it would take quite a bit of light work and bulletproof vests.
Was there anything else weird about the revisions in the law that I sent you guys? Did you see anything weird?
I have notes.
I, I sent it to the attorney, and I'm waiting to hear back from him about anything else he might change on it, but I don't, I didn't hear back from him yet.
Anybody else wanna go first?
I bet.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna go in order. I had two hours on a train today, so I made a lot of notes. Section one is a little wording thing. The intent of the Shandaken short-term rental law is to allow residents to augment their income without creating mini hotels and motels. I mean, that's kind of what they are doing, so I, but that also feels, can we just combine that with the next sentence? So, it just says, the intent of the Shandaken short-term rental law is to allow residents to augment their income while protecting neighborhood character? Instead of, like, it almost sounds like we're making a dig, and why are we talking about mini hotels and motels? I mean, technically, they are, right?
Technically, they are.
Again, that's just, exactly, it's just a technicality, it's just a feeling thing, it's not critical.
We're, we're hoping to keep a residential-
It shouldn't feel like motels and hotels, exactly. Like I said, that one's just me being picky, but we'll start with that one. Section three A, and I know some of the letters are off with the editing.
Yeah, the letters are-
So, I'm using existing lettering of paragraphs as it's written. It says that any short-term rental in existence upon the effective date of this local law must comply fully with the requirements of this local law and must, within ninety days after the effective day, date of this local law, obtain an S T R license. I think that should be apply, because if they apply within eighty-nine days and it takes us a month, then it's our problem, so let's say they should apply within the ninety days. The C, the whole cap thing, we still have to talk about that more, so I'll just skip over that for now. G, and this goes to what Kevin was just saying. For S T R, hold home rentals in emergency contact document bearing the name and contact information of the host, and I believe our language and our definitions up above, we don't define host, we define owner or property manager.
Oh, yeah, I didn't miss that.
Yeah, so any, and then, two sentences later, it says host or hosts, and it should say owner or property managers.
Or property manager, right.
And then, line five, notice to the C E O, and up above it says the code. We went back and forth last time a bit on who is going to handle processing of what? Do we want to name specific titles of people in the law, or do we want to say the town? And make it a generic person, because there was some back and forth, well, Joyce handled all the permits, but we also does send Sarah, but here it says the town clerk is gonna do bits. I, I think we just need to clean that up and make it very clear in the law.
Just for town.
In the town, depending who does it, as well as cover, yeah.
You're gonna get it from the town, update the town, notify the town.
You know, Bob could come in and do it one day.
What section is that?
That is G.
G three, G.
It just, it says host, C E O of the whole law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll switch all of it out.
Yeah. And then, K. A gathering or party of more than twenty persons is expressly prohibited. So, now I'm gonna be picky again. I know you love it when I do that.
Throw it out there, throw it out there.
Elsewhere, and I forget the exact letter, we mentioned that children under the age of sixteen don't count.
Right.
Can I have two adults and thirty-two sixteen-year-olds on this program?
You wouldn't want to.
I don't, no, I would never do that.
All right, theoretically.
If theoretically is debatable and a point could be made, that we have just said that children under the age of sixteen don't, okay, so fifteen. So, no, the answer is no, I couldn't have thirty-two sixteen-year-olds, but I could have thirty-two fifteen-year-olds, which would be, I don't know, better or worse. But, so, do we thi, does anybody else think that matters, or is that overly picky? I think in the S T R gathering, we just said, or in the S T R committee, we worded it as large gatherings. We didn't give it a number, and that kinda let us have a little leeway. But I don't, I don't know.
We could do large gatherings, but, I mean, if you go in, if you go in and say, um- Stop gathering.
Then, yeah.
They're gonna say why and-
Yeah, I mean, do we, that may be that's a question for-
It says, children under the age of sixteen are not to be counted as occupants for this purpose. I think that language is-
So, maybe that's okay then?
I think persons in the general would count all persons.
Yeah, I think, I think it's okay.
Of which fifteen-year-olds are probably persons, so.
But we can change that number if you want to change that number.
No, I think that it's good, no, and twenty's a reasonable size.
Yeah.
To hold for an S T R, yeah. Do we have any S T R, that's another question. Do we have an operating S T R that can accommodate twenty people according to our code?
It's possible.
Yeah, it's definitely possible, because that's the catalyst for this whole conversation.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is that someone was hosting weddings.
Yeah, that did start a lot of it, yeah.
And this is four years ago, but, you know.
No, I remember that quite a bit, so, all right.
Yeah. It was an issue.
Yeah, oh, absolutely is.
Yeah.
I think it's one of those.
Okay, next.
Yeah, good. Section four A, we again say town board, let's just, instead of the C E O, let's just make sure that it says a form provided for that purpose by the town. Application must, so, section four A one, the application must include the following, a one-time application fee and annual license fee. I think elsewhere, we say that the annual license fee isn't paid at that time, and I think your license fee shouldn't be paid when you're applying.
Right, yeah, no, it shouldn't.
Okay, so we'll pull that out. Item two, the owner name, telephone number, mailing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The application shall also identify whether such person or their spouse, member of their household, or adult children possess, I don't see, why do we need to know if an adult child who may no longer live with them and isn't a member of a separate house also owns an S T R?
In the same license, like, if they're, if they're together, I'm just trying to-
Well, we want them to list whether that person ha, has, this wording says, possesses an ownership interest in a S T R or corporate entity that is issued. So, what this is saying is, if you have, are applying for an S T R, but you've got an adult child who lives anywhere else and has an S T R license, you have to list them on our application, I don't see why. Members of the same household, sure, that's how people can get around, having a license with only, you know, more than one. It's like, well, this is my license, this is my wife's license, this is my sister-in-law's license.
Or my dog's license.
Well, I think we need to strike adult children as keep it to their spouse or member of their household.
Okay.
But that is an interesting thing, are we limiting it to one license per person or one license per household? I mean, a couple married, filing separately, will make the argument that it's her business and it's his business.
Yes, and I don't wanna-
But we just want that listed, are we gonna, I'm just curious, are we limiting it to one license per household or one license per person?
Per person.
Okay. No person or individual may possess, I'm still not sure that I'm okay with one per person.
Should, shouldn't it be one per property, shouldn't it be go over that instead of person? Isn't that what the discussion always was? Is that way you, you don't have an instance of a husband having a license for a property that is the garage, but then, another person has a license for accessory unit? I always thought it was property, and that's how we got into the discussion of dwelling units.
We could do that, one per property.
One license for a property, I think is definitely the way to go, yeah. Number three, the S T Rs full address, may I suggest we add, that we ask for their physical and mailing address if it differs? We have many-
Yeah, didn't we ask for that already?
Oh, we might ask, do we ask for it down below?
I mean, a lot of this is redundant.
Okay, so that might be redundant, I think it is asked for down below.
Is this best placed within the law at all? I mean, all these things about the, the application, I would think that this would be something that we potentially wanna be able to amend without necessarily have to change the law, that the town will have an application process for the license. We would still wanna know what that is, but, but having it in this level of detail within-
That's actually a good point, we could just say that the application must include, must be, you know, you have to fill out the application form completely, there's a nice eloquent legal way to say that, and then, you're right, we don't have to list everything that's on the application, you just have to complete the application.
Right.
And then, a year from now, we've realized-
And I did tell the lawyer to try and strike out anything that would be in an application and only put what should be in the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing you have to amend is if the prices change, like we did with dog licensing.
Right, we can change the form without changing the law.
But it's dog licensing, same thing, we had to put it on the first law.
Well, and we might decide we want different sets of contact information, that would be super helpful, or, or we want to ask the question, or, as you, as an owner, have you subscribed to Shandaken Alerts?
Yeah. Yeah.
We might very reasonably wanna ask that, but we don't necessarily wanna have that in the regulation, that like.
Right, we're gonna give metaphors at us.
And much of this is just like that, where it should be in the application, it doesn't need to be in the law.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's much better way of doing that. Um, B, we just say town clerk again, we can say town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, B two, the residents, we've still got, uh, compliance with New York State Uniform Fire and Safety Code. Um, I think we should need to go with, um, the residents has satisfactorily passed the town SDR fire and safety inspection. Cause that, that, I went through some of that code again with Sarah, some of that code is, is, uh, it's harder than a CFO, which we've already determined a lot of our houses are never gonna get, it's like, your staircase isn't wide enough, you're not gonna pass, um, you know, from fire and safety code.
So what are we gonna call a town or Shandaken, uh, SDR building?
SDR fire and safety inspection?
Okay.
I would just, you know, need to make sure that that is adequate. Um, three, again, we say the town CEO. Um, we still have to sort, sort out the first come, first served basis, how that process is going to work, but I don't know that that's an in-the-law thing, do we, or is that more procedural?
Probably procedural, I know we had a couple of conversations about that, but I don't, it wouldn't go in the regulation itself.
Um, and then in E, line four, um, we again, we say that the CEO has conducted an onsite inspection to confirm the structure is in compliance with the New York State Uniform Code. Make that our fire and safety inspection. Uh, and actually, this is, this is a, um, this is talking about renewals, and one of the rules for renewing is that you have to have passed the original inspection. I think the fact that you're renewing means you did pass the first one, so we probably just strike that, and just say that you have to have a fire and safety, I think it should say fire and safety inspection every, it just says three years, are we good with every three years?
I think we're probably okay with every three years.
Yeah?
Three years, sounds good to me.
And then six inspections, and again says state uniform code. Um, six A, it again says, New York State Uniform Fire and Safety Code. Under that line one, uh, we talked about this last time. I think, instead of saying, listing what the smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector requirements are, that we did come up with a good wording for fire safety requirement concerning smoke alarms, CO2 alarms, and fire extinguishers as per the most recent version of the National Fire Safety Code. Yeah, we do get to slip the national code in. That way, as that changes and things, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for us to, in our code, not meet what the national requirement is, we could get into trouble if somebody, if we say, oh, you only needed these two smoke detectors, but national code said you could do four, and there's a fire.
Well, we need to meet the New York State.
Yeah, I think we just say that we meet, instead of us listing what the requirements are, let's just say, you have to meet the most recent version of the National Fire Safety Code. Um, and we did not include, did we include? We did not include, um, fire extinguisher inspection certification. I know, and that was a debate, we debated that a lot in the committee, cause everybody goes to Home Depot and buys their kitty or their first, whatever the, and you can't inspect those. You've gotta, that they don't, they don't have.
They must have an expiration date on them, no?
They do have expiration dates, but we, someone looked into it on the committee and confirmed, it was, uh, one of the inn owners.
It was Ralph.
But it was Ralph, I believe Ralph Combe looked into it with the people he uses for fire extinguisher inspections, and they said they cannot certify those, you know, home, what, consumer, I don't know the wording for it.
Home owner.
Yeah, the, the basic little go-to-home people and buy, you need the kind that has the dial, that has to be able to be tested.
It's got a gauge on it.
Yeah.
Has the tag that says it's inspected.
Yeah, so they can't inspect those.
We have them at the town hall.
Yeah, see.
We actually have them, we just had them inspected.
Right there, right?
I don't know where they are.
So if you sound too, is that.
I know it's one by my office.
Right there.
Is that going to be an excessive burden to require that they all go out and buy the much more expensive certifiable fire extinguishers? And then also, the annual inspection isn't much, what's it, like a hundred, fifty, a hundred dollars to get your fire extinguishers? I just signed it the other day. We just had it done apparently, it came through, but I don't remember.
Yeah, generally it's about, it depends on how many u- units you have.
Right.
Yeah, but it's gonna be around a hundred.
But it, we had talked about before, I thought it was in here before, I didn't find it this time, so, we talked about needing them and placing them, do we?
Would that be part of the fire inspection?
I would say a working one, what's that?
Would that, would that be part of the fire inspection when that's done?
I mean, I guess it would be, and they can just check.
And that would be, if, if they did it, this way we'd know.
The expiration date, or to see if, if somebody wants to go and get the tags, you know, I don't, um, so I guess we could just make it part of the inspection?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's all. That's it.
Anybody else have any questions on the updated, uh, additions or subtractions? Good catches.
Train ride.
So, in section five, number five, um, we already have a law in place for the garbage receptacles, right? Shall not be rodent-proof and covered and be removed from the current site pickup and location with twenty-four hours. Pickup dumpers shall not be visible from the street or neighbors. Do you think we have to add that in the actual law, seeing as we already have a law? Can it just be something in the flyer? Cause I mean, we don't really enforce that law per se. Is that, is it redundant, or do you, do you guys think it should be?
I thought about that same thing, it, and I, it's listed what the renter has to be notified of, but if it's on the flyer, and we're already saying the renter has to be given the flyer, then yes, I suppose it is redundant, we don't need to.
But what law do we have?
That is the current law.
Yeah.
Is that what we do?
Well, we, right above it, we have parking requirement as per zoning code section, et cetera, would this be garbage requirement as per?
Same thing.
Yeah, do we, do we need to list?
I just don't.
I mean, item seven, no, I think you're, it's a good point, use and, gonna focus, it says a copy of the Good Neighbor flyer. Are we not going to have items one through six printed on the Good Neighbor flyer? So.
Well, the Good Neighbor flyer does have.
And this way, if something changes, we can change the flyer without having to change the law.
Right.
Because, yeah, these are just things, these are all existing laws.
Mm-hmm. I just think to have, it's like putting a law in a law.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, we could take it out, it's there in the little flyer.
Yeah, it is mentioned in the flyer.
I don't know that being redundant is a.
I mean, there was a slight difference there, because the flyer.
Maybe it's the wrong word.
A bad thing.
No, no.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
The flyer's intended audience is the guest.
Guests, right.
Whereas, of course, this is, the intended audience is the owner, so.
Mm-hmm.
It, there's not much point in telling the guest, your garbage receptacle must be rodent-proof, like, the guest doesn't operate their own, right, so.
Right, they don't get, they don't really care, right.
Um, so I think it's probably worth having that listed on the application, because again, the owner needs to know what they're applying to and what rules they're on.
Okay.
I don't necessarily think that needs to specifically be in the Good Neighbor policy, yeah, flyer, sorry. Um, however, within the law itself, it might be best to just link to that pre-existing law, so that if that law changes, it doesn't have to get changed here.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, so we could just say garbage.
So this would just be to the garbage code section, what have you, the application would indicate the current garbage code is receptacle shall be rodent-proof, not visible from blah, 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 and that would be within the application.
Anything else, Carl?
Um, I forget what we came up with, with the proof of property and short-term rental landlord insurance. Um, so we, we are, are we requiring proof of that insu- are we requiring proof of that insurance?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. And that, I believe that's usually covered under, um, under Airbnb anyway, though, right? Or no? It's not?
You, you can get it through Airbnb, I know several people who have SDR riders.
So it's optional.
Landlord insurance, yeah, you do not have to get the insurance through Airbnb.
Okay.
And then, of course, a lot of people don't use Airbnb.
Right.
The biggest, I understand, but, yeah.
Right.
But, yeah, you can't, so, and maybe that just has to make sure we've got adequate wording, cause they don't all call it landlord insurance. Sometimes it is called an SDR rider, uh, you can get short-term rental insurance, you can get landlord insurance, I think different companies have different names for it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's probably just a wording.
Yeah, that was more of a question, really.
Thing to work on, yeah.
Proof of property insurance and proof of insurance covering harm or liability to guests. It's about in those lines, it's a little more generic, as opposed to specific title there. And then is guest one of our terms, yeah, guest is one of our terms.
And so, we, we wanna take out, or you still wanna wait on deciding about the no cap on residents and a cap of one sixty on non-residents?
Well, again, not residents, necessarily resident hosts, owner occupied.
Resident hosts. Owner occupied or non-owner occupied.
I think it's worth pitching to the lawyer, asking if he has any.
Yeah, do you have any specific feelings on that, what he meant?
Or, or any case law, any examples, I mean, there's been enough SDR laws over the last couple of years that I suspect that folks have, we know folks have put caps in in some places.
Yeah.
Have they, have any of them been challenged, and if he happens to know that, and if not him, maybe the, um, association of towns?
Yeah, Woodstock, for example.
He said he's worked both sides of the SDR, both for the town and for residents who.
And so, so when he's been involved in a cap, it's gotten challenged and been struck down, or?
I don't know, he just meant if there's a, a difference in enforcement, or a difference in laws.
I mean, I can certainly see.
It could open, will it, we don't know.
Of course, but.
If Woodstock put a hard cap of two hundred and eighty-five, they're uh, slightly bigger than us, so they've got a.
That was a total cap, though, right?
That's their total cap, they have two hundred and eighty-five, nine-month moratorium, I don't know when that started or when it's gonna end.
Cause the, the lawyer's concern wasn't the existence of a cap, right?
It's treating differently, right?
Differently, right, so.
Um, the city of Hudson, uh, a resident of the city of Hudson, either as an individual or through an entity in which such individual holds a majority equity and voting interest, may operate up to three short-term rental units. Any person who owns a dwelling unit in the city of Hudson but is not a resident and resides in it at least fifty days of year may operate it as a short-term rental unit for up to a maximum of sixty days, so the city of Hudson is treating residents and non-residents differently. And their law went into effect May thirty-first of twenty twenty. Uh, so they're coming up on two years, so be interesting to see if they've had any challenges. There was another.
Well, what's their names were challenged, right, up there in Lexington?
Uh, yeah, at some point, they just had a lot of opposition, but I don't, I, they got thrown out, I believe.
Well, that often happens, because.
I mean, if we're talking about the number, you know, last week, we were talking about a, a three hundred for a total cap, I think a hundred and sixty is generous if we're prioritizing, you know, residents.
Right.
You know, it's, should probably be less, I would think, or I would feel better if it was less.
I would feel better if it was.
Like, you know, that's, it's half, it's not prioritizing.
If you're, if we're doing three hundred. Yeah, it's over half, um, yeah. Yeah, that part of the thing, I, yeah, I s- I, I would very much like to prioritize residents. Have fewer restrictions on the residents, um.
Definitely.
Well, we could do that by saying there's no cap on residents.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess we could, and, and cap, but a hundred and sixty for non-residents does feel high, still, yeah.
Well, again, is this residence, or is this that owner?
Non-owner occupied.
Right, so.
Which, it, it's, it's the same thing, it just becomes convoluted when you start saying resident, because it's like, as easy as saying, well, I'm a resident now. You know.
Right.
Well, it depends, are we, are we saying resident host, as we have defined it, as in you live on the property the SDR operates, or what about a resident of Shandaken that has one or two, or however many SDRs and their property, but then also owns a second, completely separate property with an SDR on it? That is a resident, but not both of those are resident hosts, it's a resident who is a host, but that, that's different.
Right, but for all intents and purposes, it's one, one license, so it's essentially owner occupied, but I understand your point.
Oh, so if you own.
I, I understand what you're saying, it's, it's a wording.
Yeah, cause you own.
If you're owner occupied, you're occupying the property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The property, but resident.
You're on with, with maybe an accessory or two, but you don't, you don't occupy a piece of property.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, so are we, do you need two licenses if you have two lots, two properties that are not adjacent, not, I don't think that even matters, but if you own, if you live in Woodland Valley, and you have an, an accessory dwelling unit on your property, and you also own a property in Pine Hill, and that property obviously is not your primary residence, but that is a house that is completely in SDR, so you own one SDR here and one SDR here, two licenses, one per property, or one license for the owner if it covers both properties? I think we.
Well, I envisioned one license for the one property, the one owner. I mean, I didn't envision.
Someone getting a, a full-time resident license and then a non-owner occupied license?
Right.
Well, yeah, so that would, so one license would cover them both, I think I'm not.
I, I.
Well, we just talked about it being one per property, right?
Yeah, I think one, one per property.
Yeah, one per property.
One per property, per owner.
So that, that person could get two licenses, we're not gonna restrict that, cause he, they are a resident of this town.
Well, currently, the way we have this written is that the one, I mean, the way I envisioned it written was that you, the property you're on is the property you're licensing.
But if you own the other one, you can't get a license for it, or you can't?
In someone else's name.
So is.
No point in writing a law that has built-in rules.
Yeah, well, but, yeah, like, if I buy, like you said, if I live in Hamlet of Shandaken and I buy a property in Alaven, and then wanna license that property, I wouldn't be allowed to?
We have a number of those, already existing, and it's way more than twelve.
Yes. Yes.
It's, it's a big number, people who, who already own multiple homes in this town, on multiple properties, SDR multiple.
So then, then what do we have the law for?
Well, we talked about, again, originally, what we came at was, we're, we didn't wanna limit residents, we only wanted to limit non-residents.
Okay.
So if you lived here, you could do that and own multiples. Um, we only talked about, we only talked about the cap on the maximum number of non-residents, how many they could own.
Okay.
If it turns out that every single SDR operated in this town is owned by the same guy, or they're rather, that doesn't live in this town, is owned by one guy, that's fine, as long as there's only this many of them.
Right.
I don't care if Kyle owns all of them, although he lives here, so I really don't care.
I know, yes.
Yeah, and I, I, it doesn't matter to me that one person owns all of our non-resident SDRs, or two people or fifty people.
There could just be so many.
I only want so many not owned by residents.
Okay.
And, and the residents, um, I, I, I don't want to cap the residents.
All right.
I, I just don't, on how many they can own, um.
That's why it's a license per property.
Yeah, that's why it's per property, and if you own two properties, you need two licenses.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and maybe we should, maybe there should be some cap, maybe we don't, I don't know if anybody in this town owns a dozen properties that they SDR.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But, um, I don't think it should be only one licensed property per resident.
Okay.
Anybody else have?
For full-time residents, I think.
Yeah, for a full-time resident.
Right.
And then, I realize that's what our lawyer said we might get challenged on, but I wanna know, might, challenged, but don't worry, you'll win, or, oh my goodness, you're gonna lose your shirt. You know, wa- You know, where in those, where where does he, what do we?
Yeah, that has to be defined.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've seen that in other towns, too, where there's no cap on residents and there is on.
Yeah.
And and so the cap would just be residents who own the property. Not, I mean, no cap on residents who own their properties. But if you're a host or you're a non-resident or a non-full-time person, we're going to leave it at one property.
Well, no, again, I don't, if you you don't live here, you can, I I I just want to.
Yeah, I think I I I hear what you're saying, right? You don't care, or you, it doesn't matter. But I think the interesting part about that in this town is that we have a, like, fifty percent second homeownership.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, so, yeah, right, it's gone up, so, you know, that it might have to be a little bit more.
And all they have to do is switch their primary residence.
Yeah, it might have to be a little less, bit less heavy-handed than that, uh, you know.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be unlimited and only ten percent, but it's like, I
Yeah.
I feel we need to do something that favors residents.
The ten percent isn't, you know, that doesn't really mean anything. We need, we should give a number. If you want to make it a hundred.
Yeah. I don't I don't know what that's.
And you don't care if if the same person owns all hundred of them.
Well, I'd be really impressed on that, because that would, uh, but.
Let's not put that challenge up there.
Yeah, you know, so I don't think that's an important part of the law, right?
Why not cap it to, why not cap it to one property per non-resident?
Well, because I think then we're going to, what we were told in the committee, somebody went and looked into it. I don't know if they went to Ben or if it was just because Sam has looked into this sort of things before. But trying to track down who owns a corporation, no matter what we do, a- all you're doing is, there's so many ways around it that it's almost unenforceable, and if it's unenforceable, why are we putting it in the law?
Well, what if we say the non-residents can't be a corporation? I mean, and it has to be in a name.
I don't know that you can do that.
I think we, yeah, I think that's true.
Yeah, they have, they were, yeah, yeah, they thought it was going to work.
I just picture there being a non-resident company who comes in, if there's a limit of a hundred, who shows up at the very first moment it's open and puts in fifteen applications. Because it that would that would effectively prioritize companies on the non-resident side.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And what stops people from saying, oh, you you're saying non-residents versus residents? Let's say somebody lives in Florida and they and they have a house here. What stops them from saying, oh, I live here now and not in Florida? And now they get to.
I mean, if you, I guess, prove that you're a resident there, but yeah.
Now they get to have.
I mean, if you make it your legal residence, there's nothing we can do about it, right? If it's if you other towns have tried, I've seen some towns put it in there that say, in order to be a legal resident, you have to occupy the property this many nights a year.
For so many, right.
How how on earth do you try that?
I I I don't know.
I can't take a hundred nights. I've been at my house this year. I don't know.
Well, generally, there's a formula. You have to show the mailing address. You have to show, you know, your
Two forms of.
Yeah. Vote or registration.
Your license and your registration.
People that are savvy.
There are legal ways to.
There's easy ways around it, yeah.
Yeah, people that are savvy can.
Are.
How much ownership makes it resident ownership? Like, if we think of a company, if a company is fifty percent owned by a resident and fifty percent owned by a non-resident, is that a resident ownership or non-resident ownership? Or perhaps more likely would be, what I'm getting at is that if you're a company and you want to be here and you want to be out of the cap, do you just offer one percent ownership to a resident? And then, like, well, there's a, there is a resident owner. They own one percent.
Right. Somebody had wording that I saw today that dealt with that, that said
You have to have.
Fifty percent of the company ownership has to be resident-owned to count. I forget which town did that, but I did see it today.
Majority stake. Must be.
Resident.
And that might.
But that's in the original exit report. That's why corporations were treated as non-residents. Correct, right? Isn't that how it was always treated? So that prioritized?
I don't.
So even even if you're a resident with a company, then you take one of those non-resident spots?
Right, exactly. And I know there's plenty of, you know, per people who have their own LLCs. And that was the thought process behind that, was that if you're a resident and you have an LLC, then it's sort of a win-win for the town if you, you know, you, we weren't, in our head, we weren't charging more for LLCs or whatever. But you're occupying one of those spots that could be a large corporation from Sacramento.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just good going.
Break.
I like the idea of that, too. That you want to take in the spot of somebody that's potentially, that is potentially just doing it for, you know.
So that's.
Not the purpose that we're trying to.
Resident individual on one side and non-resident and a corporate ownership or LLC on the other.
Or you make three, three brackets. But we have to wait for the tape.
Do you want to do that motion, Sue? When you start to talk about the fees and do the motion beforehand?
Oh, you're good. Uh, when we accept the fees.
Okay, or you could just write down who votes, and then we do it that way, because I'm like, my contact has to be removed.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Is that right? You got it?
Yeah.
Tape's back.
Yeah.
Yes. Where am I putting them?
Yeah, I was pretty much done.
We're back.
We're back, okay. So let's let's nail this down, whatever we decide.
Sure.
So there's going to be no cap on residents, and we're going to cap corporate and non-residents to a hundred properties.
I'm just gonna say fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah, maybe in the middle, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, I would.
Seventy-five.
I I think I think one hundred is high.
Right now, we have, based on the spreadsheet and Grace's interpretation of it, which it it did take some, we are at a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight owned.
Yeah.
No, it was more than that, wasn't it?
One twenty-one or something.
One twenty that are owned by non-residents.
Wow.
What's that?
Really?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Out of the two hundred and fifty on the list, a hundred and twenty are non-residents.
Yeah.
And how is that including the LLC ownership?
Well, didn't count that.
So but that that would make that number.
Splitting up the list by zip code of mailing address, that's how I made that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If the zip code was in Shandaken, that was.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I'm seeing, I'll see if Dennis, like, a lot of these are, there's a number of LLCs.
So we don't even have to mention a cap for residents. I'll just put in there that there's a cap of
That's one.
Whatever number we would require of non-residents slash.
Do we need to land on that number tonight?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Or, yeah, we should, because we're only two weeks out. And we don't, I don't think we want to do another workshop, do we?
They're so fun, though.
I think we have to, right? Probably.
No, but probably.
Believe me, I don't want to do one either, but.
I Grace had mentioned she could give us a more reliable list.
Is that true?
Yeah, it'll take a little time. It's labor intensive. Does the Airbnb listings change so often? When ownership flips, the listings change. It takes a little time. Yeah, that's a number I can give you.
A little time like a week, a little time like a month?
Probably a week. I mean, it's not a great time to do it, yeah, probably a week.
Okay, no, but do we want to get that number? So we know what we're, do we definitely know what we're talking about for a change?
It would certainly be nice.
I I would like to have that number before I decide on a cap. I mean, we've got a lot of numbers, right? And everybody I've talked to, everybody that I've talked to since the last workshop that I've said the county says two fifty, they have laughed and said, well, you know, it's a lot more than that, right? And I'm like, no, I don't know. I honestly don't know. It depends on how you count them. I mean, that's any, we're talking about one property, they, whether it has, and I'm not saying this is wrong, I agree with this, whether it has one, one-bedroom SDR on the property or ten.
Right, we're doing it by property.
Accessory dwelling units. The county says that's one SDR.
Right.
So when people laugh and say, oh, it's more like three hundred, four hundred, how are we counting them? That, you know, it's.
With Grace's help.
But even your list is just going to tell us how many properties have SDRs on them or how many dwelling units.
If you tell me what numbers you're looking for, I can do my best to accommodate that. And the last time I made that list, there were three hundred and forty-plus listings on Airbnb, but if you pull up the commercial listings, you're down a hundred and forty. And of what's left over, you'll find that one person will have three or four listings on one property. So if you want them all just per property, this is how many listings on this one piece of property. I can do that.
I mean, if we're licensing it
I've seen it.
Per property.
Per property, then we don't need to know how many units on our property. I was just pointing that out, and then people are worried that our cap is X, and they know it's a lot more than that.
Right, right, right.
Right.
We're licensing properties to operate SDRs on, not the number of units on the property.
Correct, sure.
So, yeah, I think that's, we, properties, properties. That would be great to know. I'd like to have that before I.
And if that's the only thing we have to nail down at the next workshop, it'll be real fast.
Yeah, so. We'll meet in coffee. It'll be fine.
Okay, let's go beyond the the law and let's talk about the brochure slash flyer. Anything that needs to be added to it or taken away?
Bears.
Bears, lots and lots of, do not pet bears.
Well, God, might not be the worst thing, but.
Do not leave the bear.
This can be amended as well, right?
This isn't even something, we can change this weekly.
Okay.
I mean, this is something we're going to put on the website so that the owners can print it off and put it in their SDRs as in a little piece of the information.
Use ways.
Right, this isn't.
That they can give their guests.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't really have any problems with it as it is. It's fun.
I mean, we don't have to talk about, you know, if it's raining, put your hat on.
Right, right.
It 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 might be worth having something about, like flooding, things like that of, um, I was going to say swim, um.
Emergency, yeah, emergency.
Yeah, I I I mean, like.
Should this flyer mention Grace's yellow card?
I think Joyce's yellow, I'm saying Grace's all night. This will be, this this will be part of the package, and that red emergency card will come with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's going to be also some, you know, burning stuff in the dog license.
Burn ban, like notices and stuff like that.
Burn ban stuff. That'll be with this as as a package of things that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just talking about just this?
This, yeah.
Now, everything is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if it can be changed.
I mean, I stopped saying that, and I know that we'll update this and add some changes.
Yeah. Exactly. It's one of those things. Okay, now, the structure. The last, and certainly not the least.
Most. I'm gonna let you go and start that one.
These, I think, are, uh, this is a reasonable fee, I believe. Uh, I'm thinking of, I put some numbers together. Uh, it was, L helped me. We were both together and we put them here before that, but basically, I think the the most insignificant, not insignificant, the most, the smallest, uh, maybe one-bedroom accessory will bring in between fifteen and twenty grand a year. This is a number I'm throwing out as a.
Did you base this off any other fee structures that you looked at, or is this just kind of?
Uh, it wasn't based on, I mean, I called Woodstock, I called Olive, I called a bunch of towns that did those same fees somewhere a little bit.
And they did them by bedroom?
Uh, often it was just a one-time, a one-fee, I mean, a one-year.
Right. That's that's because I, the only research I did.
My thing with the bedroom, my idea about the bedroom is that, uh, you know, sometimes you have a one-bedroom accessory house or cottage, and other people have a eight-bedroom house.
Mm-hmm.
I think the person with the eight-bedroom place should pay more. They're making hundreds of thousands.
That simply goes to your point of if you add a bunch of buildings onto the same property, you presumably have more bedrooms, so.
And if you add a bunch of buildings. Yeah. Instead of adding a license per.
Per structure, per per room, it's built into the the fee structure.
It's just built in as a per bedroom.
When it says host resides in dwelling, does that mean on property or in the same building?
No, that.
That was owner occupied.
That's an owner occupied, the, there's a bedroom or bedrooms in the house with them.
So that they live in the house?
In the house, right.
Mm-hmm. So most people don't do that, correct?
Correct. Most people have an accessory.
I couldn't find any in fact.
So we're looking, so we're looking at a thousand dollars.
Right.
Right off the bat.
For a one-bedroom accessory that can bring in twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
I I want to speak to that briefly, because I, and yeah, we did talk about it. I've been going following this, and you know, I I told you that, I had some thoughts on that. When we say can bring in, you're talking gross revenue.
We're talking.
Yeah, that's that's, and that's that's based on, I know you, just just because you guys weren't all there when Peter and I talked about it, he was he was explaining to me, that looked at, I'm sure I'll get some of these numbers slightly along, but an average price for a one-bedroom on one of the hosting platforms in Shandaken being around a hundred and fifty dollars a night. There are some that are more, there are some that are less. And a forty or fifty percent occupancy rate, so you take three sixty-five, cut it in half, multiply it by a hundred and fifty a night, and you're between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's gross revenue coming in. Um, and I know the Airbnb fees are on top of that, and sometimes cleaning fees are separate from that, but that's not necessarily what because it's that, those are the gross, that's the gross revenue, not the profit, not the net.
It's what you would be paying sales tax on.
Yeah, it's what sales tax would be based on. That's where, that's where that number came from, and you were looking at roughly
Two percent.
The equivalent of a two percent of that, and that's where the fee came from. Now, where where this deviates slightly from that is one fifty, is that is that what the one-bedroom standalone would be? Because we put that at a thousand, but two percent of twenty thousand dollars is not a thousand dollars.
But you, we also put in for a hundred and fifty-dollar bedroom, and when you, when you went in there, you tried to book it, it booked for two nights for
Yeah, so that's, I'm sorry.
like well over three hundred and some, three hundred and fifty bucks, because they added in.
I mean, according to Air DNA, around here, the occupancy rate is around sixty-five percent, but I I don't, I don't know what it really is where they get that from. If you go on Airbnb and look at crossed-off dates, that doesn't mean it's a booked night. That could be the night that they are using it for family who's visiting, or that they're going to get away for the kids for the night, or it can mean lots of things. Or there are times when they're not going to be there and they don't rent when they're not going to be there. So I I didn't like Air DNA's sixty-five percent, but we went with the lower number side, and I'm just, I'm just not sure we've got the half a year, a hundred and eighty-two nights, a hundred and eighty-two and a half, a hundred and eighty-two, um, so one fifty. Pardon my bad typing. In theory, a fifty percent occupancy rate at a hundred and fifty a night is twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'm again, I'm rounding, twenty-seven-three. And that times the point, times two percent is five hundred and forty-six dollars. If you have a one-bedroom accessory house that theoretically might bring that in, we're saying a thousand dollars, so it's actually four percent, not two percent.
Still have to, uh. Still have to, uh, have the rate of sales tax.
Yes, but cons, and I know, one of the big reasons why we wanna embrace STRs is the income for the town, but, um, I didn't find any place in my nationwide Googling that had higher than six hundred dollars for a fee, and that was Telluride, Colorado.
And that was a flat fee?
That was, um, yes, an STR license, uh, maxed out at six hundred.
Annual.
Yeah, annual. And we're not really Telluride. Close enough. I mean, it barely tells the difference on a winter day, but, um, I, and I know, I, I mean, and, and members of the, of the committee who were there solely representing, not solely representing, but who were on the short-term rental committee, who were, um, short-term rental owners themselves, constantly touted the benefits of bringing money in. But I wanna make sure it's not a punitive fee.
It's, yeah.
I mean, if you got a two bedroom, if you've got a three bedroom, we're asking for two thousand dollars upfront, uh, tax.
You do it over time.
Exactly, and it's not out of your pocket, you collect it from the guests, you give it to us. We're saying two thousand dollars right now.
But you do get it from the guests.
Well, and this.
No, no, we're, we're asking for it upfront. We're asking for it upfront.
Of course, but you get it from the guests.
Eventually.
Eventually.
You add five dollars to your.
It's also a business expense that you would take off on your own taxes in theory, as opposed to, say, a property tax, which you cannot do that. I mean, just looking at the town's budget here, we kinda need the money. I mean, I think.
Absolutely.
If we don't get the money here, then we raise the taxes someplace else, because there's a lot of shit that's broken. What do you, I mean, as a business owner, would you rather pay it as a, as a license that you can have as a business expense, or would you rather pay it as a property tax that you can? I'm not sure that, I think it might be one or the other.
Well, property tax isn't even on the table, right?
No, but if, like, one way or another, we've got a lot of things broke in town, right?
Yeah, alright.
But you.
Of STR owners to pay for.
Well, I, I mean, the answer is that they'd be paying for it either way, though. If you're a business owner, you would rather have it as a business expense, and you'd be able to take this off as a very easy business expense. You wouldn't be able to do the same if it was a property tax.
But I don't know that we're definitively raising property taxes by the amount that we don't charge STR licenses, so.
No, but we need a revenue.
Yes, we do. And some of that will come by a lot of these properties who's, uh, are being assessed, uh, I'm sure Grace can tell us, by, uh, a formula from the nineteen seventies. Uh, and some of these homes have not been reassessed, because we only have so many assessors in a long time.
But that isn't changing in any, any day soon.
Well, but, no, but there, there are other ways to increase revenues by assessing
That would cost, again, like five hundred and six hundred thousand to bring in the assessors to do that.
Yeah. I'm just saying, if we're, if we're gonna say we have to have big STR licenses, because otherwise we'll raise taxes. If you're gonna go there, then you have to go with, well, where should we raise taxes? We should raise taxes on the houses that have been renovated without building permits, because assessors haven't made to, they're owned by non-residents. I mean, we can, we can bat that around forever, it still doesn't come back to whether or not a thousand dollars, the highest STR license fee in the nation, is appropriate for the town of Shandaycan.
It's a start.
Right there, it's gonna be in a headline, you know.
It's a start.
It, it is, it is, um, you know, so, I mean, I'm not gonna argue with four of you, if you all think that's a fair price. I just, I want to say that, 'cause it's gonna be yelled at me by a lot of people when I walk out of here tonight, if we leave saying a thousand, and that's fine, we're gonna get yelled at a lot, I'm just, you know, gonna make the, I'm gonna make the case for the other side, we'll tell his advocate here, you know.
That's, that's your position.
Just looking at it, I, I haven't seen it done like this. I love the income, you know, to the town, that's, that's great, um. But we're tru, it, it's a tricky kinda situation, because we're asking our residents, you know, to pay, like you said, the highest, the highest fee in the nation, um, and we're supposed to be looking out for the residents. Um, I, I, like I said, I do like the influx of money, I, um, it's, it's just a little tricky, um, and I, I haven't seen it done by bedroom, I've only seen it done by flat rate. Not saying that by bedroom cannot be done by any means.
I mean, I, I like something about scaling it, the, the bigger the property, the bigger the fee, there, there's, I think there's a valid point there. Maybe we're just, maybe our numbers are too big per though.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm thinking sidewalks, water pumps.
I was thinking, you know, whoa, you know, everybody has to do.
The town wifi.
You're in business, you're in business. You're in business to make money, and this is part of it, this is a cost of doing business.
I mean, if we could do a bed tax like the county does, I'd be all over that, because that is not an upfront cost. And the cost would be directly, gradually, it would not be punitive, it would not be, uh, uh, I'm just getting by, and now I've gotta give you a thousand dollars. I mean, if we could legally tax, I'd be all for it.
Well, it's, and it's not just a thousand dollars, I mean, most places aren't just one bedroom, let's be clear.
Yeah.
I mean, most places are, you know, two, so it's gonna be fifteen hundred standard, I would say.
And yeah, that's a sidewalk. And it'd be great, it would be great, but.
Yeah, and, and.
We need sidewalks.
Isn't, is that, is that really the right thing to put it all on?
We need upgrades in the town, serious.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Not doubting that, not one tiny bit.
And they are running a business, they are making money off the town, they're bringing more people in, which probably puts more wear and tear in the town, I, but I, I still don't know that it's fair to say, hey, the town needs money, STR owners are gonna pay for it. What is a, uh?
So, so if we go six hundred.
What is, what are, what do some other business licenses cost in the town?
So if we go six hundred, six hundred for the cost, we're, we're talking STRs.
Oh, no, I, I know, but if, if, if we're saying they're another kind of business.
Let's lower it to six hundred. I might have to look it up, I don't know.
It's, it, it seems reasonable to say that, why, you know, what, and I know some other businesses, well, the, the owner doesn't pay sales tax. Um, that's, it just doesn't pass through, and yes, they can raise it, but, and I don't, I'm not an accountant to, to state equivalently whether it.
So let's say we do six hundred.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. We have other license fees, business license fees in this town, right? Do we, do, is there, is there a town restaurant license, is there a town retail license, is there a town gas station license? What other business licenses do we have we can compare it to? Is there one?
I mean, is it the same, though?
There's, there's going, there's going to the planning board and getting a special use permit. Having public hearings.
Yeah, we don't wanna go that way. No, we wanna go the licensing way. I was just asking a question, if there are other business licenses we can compare it to in town.
I don't, I don't know a fan.
So it's not necessarily, licensing is not a cost of doing business in Shandaycan, except for STRs. Which is reasonable, because we're gonna have to go out and inspect them.
It, it's gonna cost a lot of money to get this license passed. Putting it together is costing us thousands.
Oh, absolutely.
Seems like a punishment. That's all I'll say.
Six hundred?
Uh, I, I, I would prefer to keep it as a five hundred, if you wanna do the additional rooms, you know, two fifty. You know, I think this seems like we're looking around town saying, wow, people are doing really well, we should tax the shit out of them. It's not assault tax, we're not raising an army, you know, it's.
It's not that, it's not that.
I, I understand, and.
Really? I, I pay a thousand dollars for a liquor license?
I got it, so let's raise taxes, because we need infrastructure improvements, you know, and just because it's gonna look bad when budget, so, you know.
A little place like mine, twenty-four seats, a thousand dollars for a liquor license, thousand bucks is in.
Yeah. No, I, I mean.
Cost of doing business.
Sure, sure.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's exactly what I was just looking for. So that is a license you need in this town, and a town doesn't give it to you, the state does. But that's, that's something to weigh in and consider, that's, that's exactly sort of.
What's the profit from alcohol, you wanna start talking about alcohol?
What's the profit from alcohol?
I didn't know.
I, I could tell you, I could tell you the profit margin on alcohol is a lot more than a room.
Yeah, what is it, four hundred percent?
I make alcohol for a living, it's.
We don't own, have that.
I do my best to support.
I understand, it's not, it's not.
We all of us have to buy it already.
It's not an equivalent, is the point.
It was an interesting comparison, sure, just, that's all I'm saying, it's an interesting comparison to think about, um.
You know, I, I, personally, I just think the one thousand dollar is too much. I would rather see it uniformly five hundred dollars. If you wanna agree on adding bedrooms, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
I think it should be less, two fifty. And I, again, it's not meant to be confrontational, but at the beginning of this whole process, when we started talking about the committee, at least for me, my whole thing was, we weren't doing this to take money out of my people's pockets.
Of course.
So, I, again, I, I don't mean it that this is antagonistic, these prices, but it does, to me, sort of feel like a punishment for doing well. That's it.
So, what you were saying was.
I know, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying you feel that way, I'm saying a thousand dollars is steep, in my opinion.
So, two fifty for a one bedroom, two fifty for each room, sounds something like you.
Yeah, it'd be five hundred, and say, so it's a three bedroom, then, then you're talking a thousand dollars, right? Because it's five hundred, two fifty per bedroom, additional bedroom.
So the two bedroom would be seven fifty, and a three bedroom would be a thousand, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I feel like that's, that's a fairer, personally, I feel that that's a fair, you know, especially when we're talking about, you know, prioritizing full-time residents, I know a ton of people, particularly in, in, you know, my age bracket, that, you know, they're doing it so they can pay their mortgage, because they paid way too much for their homes.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a deeper conversation that goes into, you know, a lot of other complications.
But it's a, it's an opportunity that wasn't there five years ago.
Sure, sure, I got that.
STRs, sure they were. I rented my first STR up here twenty years ago, twenty-three years ago. I mean, used it on a Craigslist, or in flyers in the liquor store.
You know, not, I think it's, not everybody that's doing this does it three sixty-five, and not everybody that's doing this is rolling around in cash. There, it's more like rolls of quarters for some people, you know, so.
It's not as comfortable.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's, that's a hard number for me to swallow, that's all.
So, the, if you have a house with some beds in it, a bedroom.
It's still a nice number at, at the numbers Kevin just threw out, it's still a nice bit of revenue for the town.
That's closer to the two percent, I believe, right, that you mentioned.
I think it does work out closer to two percent, too.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So we're gonna start with five hundred, and every bedroom is.
Two fifty afterwards?
Two fifty?
Two fifty.
Is that a number people are comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Pete, are you comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable, I, I.
I, I know.
We can revisit it next year.
Uh, well, that's the other thing, fee structures can always be adjusted.
Right, right. I'm good with it.
So at that point, if it was a bedroom in residence, if we were keeping that as a thing, that would, we should make that lower as well. Or would it just be?
I don't think we, I mean, yes.
We were just gonna strike that.
If, if all you're renting is a, is a bedroom in your house, I can see where we can take that number even lower. Uh, like I said, I did a search on Airbnb, couldn't find it. Okay, there we go. I trust her over Airbnb any day.
Me too.
But we're still, we're thinking that one person who we, yeah, I mean, the difference, the difference of a couple hundred bucks to the town is nothing. The difference of a couple hundred bucks to the person renting a bedroom in the house is huge.
So make that two fifty?
Two fifty if it's a room in your house.
Yep.
Five hundred if it's a one bedroom accessory unit, with two hundred and fifty for each additional bedroom thereafter, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, my, one specific example, say you're, because I've rented places like this, say you're Airbnb or short, you're renting a house, three bedrooms. Nobody's there, it's not an accessory unit, but it says or residence, so it says or residence, so it's taken care of already, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we add this to the public hearing on the seventh of March, second minute, all in favor?
I thought.
And this will be, uh, we'll do an addition to the fee schedule that we currently have in our book. Is there anything else we wanted to discuss? Oh, we should make a motion to have a meeting next week to.
Oh, yeah, uh, what works for.
The twenty-eighth is Monday, it's the last day of the month.
Should be alright.
Right, because then our, the regular town board meeting is.
Yeah, I, I can't, first, I do the twenty-eighth, that doesn't provoke a bit of working meeting, but I can't do the twenty-eighth, that's my other board meeting.
Can you do the first?
Yes.
A week from today, would that work for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, at six o'clock, correct?
I make sure it's not a court night.
Yeah.
That would over.
Right, right, right.
I mean, it might just be traffic court.
Yeah, right, we're just.
I'm sorry, you're okay on the first?
Uh.
Yeah, we can check.
I believe so, I need to, I believe so.
Although those court night meetings are fun, because everybody sits down, like, it's gonna be interesting, then they all file out once the meeting starts. Go stand in the hallway instead.
It would be on our site if it was a court night, right? In theory? Maybe?
Yeah, Wendy's here.
The first.
The first?
Yeah, next Tuesday. Uh, the fee schedule.
Oh, that is.
Yeah, adding it to the public hearing.
I didn't know if there was something else.
I assume.
Yeah. Right, unless Grace comes back and says otherwise the first. So we'll make that a. Since it's so much more, the, the STR.
If she has any march first, we can go by six.
Perfect.
March first it is?
Very good.
March first it is, at six o'clock. All in favor?
Alright, alright.
Any opposed? No, okay. All right, uh, make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Alright. Alright.
Would you send me your notes?
Absolutely, absolutely, uh, oh, I'm close to getting it.
Thanks.
Happy to. It costs more to drive. It takes longer on the train, forty minutes to ride, and two on the train, and a half hour on the, when I'm sitting on the old thing, so now I'm going back to work, but tomorrow.
Yeah, it's already, I've got the receipts, so, and the, I mean, I can get them at half.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially because I'm a Bay side.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna aim to be there at ten, because the traffic's a little bit lower.
Which actually is the foremost, but, uh, I'm just too tired to go to that early tomorrow.
No, so I can do that.